The Lord speaks to us, always pray to have eyes that see the best in people, a heart that forgives the worst, a mind that forgives the bad, and a soul that never moves his faith in God. Amen. Let's start us out.
On April seventeenth, I approved a supplemental appropriation from the commissioners to the general fund miscellaneous insurance expense account to cover an increase to the Corso purchase order. I also approved a voucher for two hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred forty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents from the commissioners to title professional group for the purchase of property located at two one four East Park Street, Chardon, Ohio, four four oh two four. On April twenty-first, I approved and executed the agreement with the Geoghan County Maple Festival for use of the southern end of the one hundred short quart Chardon parcel for food and other festival vendors and festival attendees during the Geoghan County Maple Festival event during the period of April twentieth through twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Item number three, Corso.
Just check the maple to make sure it's on, just so.
Do a test, do a test.
Thank you, Kristy. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning. Introduce yourselves and.
Okay, we can do that. I'm Kathy Hosteller, your human resources administrator, and this is Scott Landis. And he is our Corso representative, our agent for, um, for our liability insurance. Sherry Babowski was supposed to be here as well. Um, I know some of you know her. She's a great person, but she is really, really, really sick. So we talked with her on the ball briefly and hope she gets better so she won't be joining us today. So Scott is going to talk a little bit about Corso. I explained that Commissioner Braking, you are new to this, so whatever information we can give you about for Corso for sure, how it got started. Um, and kind of what it is and where we are with this renewal. We're here to talk about that today.
Okay, first of all, uh, Corso, uh, is stands for County Risk Sharing Authority. And currently there are seventy-three out of the eighty-eight counties in Ohio belong to this organization. Uh, because it's nonprofit, it, it's used to, to provide insurance at a better rate than you can get through a profitable insurance company where they're going to pay shareholders and everything else. Uh, you've been in the, the, uh, Corso program since May first of nineteen ninety. The Corso program itself started in nineteen eighty-seven, so you got in on the, on the early end of it, so you've been with them for thirty-five years and it's been, um, a, a good match, I believe, for Geoghan County. Uh, this year's premiums overall, first of all, the whole program of all seventy-three counties, there was an overall increase of twelve point zero seven percent. Geoghan County, however, was less than that. Theirs was ten point nine four because you, um, not only had a better loss ratio than the average, less claims, but you also get a hundred percent of your credits, which Kathy coordinates for, for the county. Um, so between credits and dividends that the company's paid, it reduces your overall cost. So that, that, that's why you're less than the average. Um, and really, the, we have some statistics on the Corso program itself. Um, and the reason there, there's a twelve percent increase is almost a hundred percent attributable to reinsurance. Uh, insurance companies and organizations have to go out and buy reinsurance where, you know, they might have enough funds to cover five million, but when you've got a, a twenty-five million exposure, you go out by reinsurance. It's like buying insurance on your insurance. That reinsurance from twen- night, from twenty twenty-one, it was four point seven million for the group. This past year was eleven point seven million. That's how much it's gone up. So you're, you're doing everything you can at this point to keep your rates down. Um, we, we get reports on claims in a timely manner. Um, and, and that's important because the sooner you act on a claim, the quicker you settle and it's usually for less money, uh, which helps your, your program loss ratio. Um, as far as some of the changes from last year, um, your property values went up about twelve million dollars that we insure. Uh, your payroll did go up, um, and you increased vehicles, I think eighteen additional vehicles, including trailers from last year to this year. All those things go towards, you know, the increase, uh, from the year before. Um, trying to think what else. Um, overall, um, over the last three years, Geoghan County has a thirty-seven percent loss ratio, which is well below the average. So if you, you stay online doing the things you are doing now, you know, I anticipate any increases would be less than the average again. So at this point, any questions?
Can you talk about the number of credits? I see in the invoice, there's a credit of about sixty-two thousand dollars. So can you tell me how we get that credit?
Yes, that's a combination of dividends and, um, what Kathy does as, as far as, uh, loss controls. She, she runs a, a seminar. If you want to explain that part.
Yeah, I want, well, first of all, yeah, I do coordinate, but it really is the directors, the managers, the supervisors, and the employees who, um, they attend the Corso, um, human resources, they come to the defensive driving. They, they really, it's not even like pulling out teeth. I mean, they are there, they do it. The sheriff's department is outstanding in all that they do. So, or, you know, at the, um, at the renewal time, we get our incentives for the year. And, um, I kind of put them out there and people come and they, you know, come to the seminars, we do a lot of training. Um, and so we get, we, I always want to get the maximum incentive. So we got, we got eighteen thousand this year, which seems like a draft in a bucket when you're looking at the total, but it's something, you know, um, I think that adds contributes. And then the rest is dividends. And I think we've gotten those pretty much about this much every, every year that I've been doing this job.
The total amount last year was almost identical as far as your total.
Yeah. So while the, you know, while it is, has increased as everything has, um, I think, you know, the county really, you know, comes together, everybody working together to make it. So we have that thirty-seven percent loss ratio.
Uh, my other question was about the, um, Corso subsidized risk management services. So can you talk a little bit about these? And, um, you know, it talks about things like jail body scanners, there's cybersecurity, um, efforts. So how, how does this program work?
Um, that area is what Sherry was gonna.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, you did. But we can, we can forward information through email on those specifics to you.
What I can tell you though is again, um, ADP takes advantage of any grants. Um, they, um, Corso offers grants. I know that the sheriff does that as well.
I mean, that's kind of what I was wondering is if we are communicating these to these departments and they aren't taking advantage.
Right. And they're, they're not grants as grant, your typical grant. They're just, they're reimbursing. If we, if we can say, hey, we spent, like ADP spent this much on like the multi, and I'll never get this right, multi-authification.
Multi-factor.
Multi-factor, or whatever. But anyway, um, they submitted the invoice, Corso reimbursed them for that. Uh, very big on cybersecurity. They do whatever they can to make sure we're not, um, getting ourselves into any problems. So, yeah.
Got it.
Okay. So where did you come up with the twelve million dollars of increased property values?
Um, well, it has to do with both additional properties purchased or if there was a reevaluation in, in the replacement costs. That'll let, let, well, eleven eight difference, if you want, we can shoot you how that is, uh, broken out if you'd like in an email.
So are you, are you utilizing like what, what has happened in our county of, you know, all these, you know, larger number evaluations that are going on as far as.
Yeah, Corso does a reevaluation every couple of years. I think your big one was done last year, so it'll be another one coming up either next year or the year after. But they do take into account, especially when you're adding a new property, they get the most up-to-date replacement cost factors.
So what new properties did you add to that?
Um, again, we have a list of all the endorsements that went in.
The only reason I'm saying that is that, you know, you know, down at the state house, they're in the process of, you know, possibly unraveling all, you know, these, you know, reappraisals that, you know, were put in that have put properties at values that probably won't sell at that price. Um, and some of these, you know, exaggerated, uh, costs, you know, are we paying a premium on those, you know, reflecting some of those costs or are we truly looking at a, a real number?
There's, there's a difference between market value, what you sell at, and replacement value.
Right.
It's replacement values are going up because of cost of materials, the shortage of supply. That's what's driving that replacement number up. We insure for replacement, not for market.
Right, but I'm seeing, so where did the twelve million come from? Because what, what other, like, uh, can you get me a complete list of?
I can, I can.
What those are?
Yep. I sure can.
Yeah, if you could send us all three.
I will.
And I'm going to straighten that.
Property value.
Giddy homework.
Increase, okay. And, and just for the record, the amount of premium, um, for that's about twenty-two thousand um, for that additional over what it was last year. So we'll give you a breakout.
Okay.
Oh, I did have one more question. So I see, um, the last page of our, and found our board packet. It breaks up the, you know, property auto and so forth. And then there's like a public officials line item that's about a hundred thousand dollars. So could you, I assume that's some sort of liability assurance just for elected officials?
Yeah, it, it is a liability coverage for, for your public officials in, in Geoghan County, which is yourselves as well as the other professionals in the building. If you get sued, um, so that's in there as well as judicial i- is part of that professional liability.
That's all I have.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I will get those emails out to you. Bye tomorrow for sure.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you.
Read number four.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board accept and approve the County Risk Sharing Authority Insurance Program Renewal for the period of May first, twenty twenty-five through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and further authorize the payment of five hundred thirty-two thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars.
So.
Second.
Mr. Braking.
Right.
Mr. Braking.
Hi.
Yes.
Morning.
Morning.
Almost missed you, Shane.
Wouldn't, you wouldn't miss me today, right?
No.
Shane Ajar with the engineer's office, here to present items five and six. Item number five, the county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution twenty-five dash zero seven two to improve various sections of county roads by applying crack seal for the year twenty twenty-five.
Do we know how like the cost for this?
Uh, we have a cost estimate worked, uh, up at two hundred thousand dollars, which is more than what we've been spending.
Yeah.
But the, the amount of crack seal needed this year after this past winter is up.
I, I can believe it. Um, I'll make a motion to approve.
Right.
Item number six, the engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution twenty-five dash zero seven three to order the asphalt resurfacing at Wilson Mills Road, County Highway eight, sections G through L in Monson Township. This resolution also requests the board approve and execute the title sheet of the specifications for the same. The further resolution sets the bid opening, uh, using bid express on, and at the county engineer's office for Friday, May twenty-third at ten oh five AM. Notice of the bid opening will be advertised on May first and May eighth and on the county website.
I move to approve.
Say. Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Elaine Markwacki, Community and Economic Development. Um, we have two items on the agenda today. Item number seven, um, Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute the three-party contract between the Geoghan County Board of Commissioners, Family and Community Services Incorporated, Doing Businesses as Chagrin Falls Park Community Center, and Country Roofing LLC for the Community Development Black Grant, number BF twenty-three one AZ dash one, Chagrin Falls Park Community Center Roof Replacement Project in the amount of sixty-four thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-six cents.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Braking.
Right.
Hi, Mr. Braking.
Yes.
And item number eight, um, is Community and Economic Development is requesting the board to approve and execute the three-party contract between the Geoghan County Board of Commissioners, Maple Leaf Community Residences, and Lindsay Construction and Design Incorporated for the Community Development Black Grant, number BF twenty-three one AZ dash one, Maple Leaf Residence Roof and Window Replacement in the amount of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. And the bid bond submitted shall be held to serve as the performance bond for this project.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Braking.
Hi.
Mr. Braking.
Hi.
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Here, uh, to talk about item nine, um, which is a change order, um, for the youth center, um, and the contract within design um, to change drawings, um, for the new site location, um, and also changing, um, the heating source from H, um, from electric to gas, um, in the amount of just under fifty thousand dollars. Um, the original, um, construction drawings, um, had the building utilities be electric and it was strongly recommended to me by some of our more construction-oriented experts in the county to switch that to, uh, gas.
For just people to pay bills.
What's that?
Yeah, just, just people to pay bills.
Right.
To be an expert on that. Do we know for that fifty thousand approximately, how that breaks up as far as, um, the cost for the new site location versus changing the HVAC?
Not breakdown on the, on the contract maintenance form.
There was.
Yeah. Or different.
Okay. Oh, thank you. So is it under electrical? Is that what we're calling this? The change for the HVAC?
Yeah, probably. It would involve a, probably a particular engineer. That's why it's.
Yeah.
Such a, no.
Cause there's certain things that for new site location, and then it says electrical technology and architectural changes. Okay. Um, I'll make a motion to approve to number nine.
Thank you.
Mr. Braking.
Right.
Mr. Braking.
Hi.
Yes.
And one of the other things, just to discuss, and I can either do it now or wait till the end of the meeting, but um, and I know I really appreciate, and I'm very glad that Warren and Nick are here. Um, but because of their incredible expertise, but, um, part of this project that wasn't, um, fully in the scope of work when we changed the site location, um, because the initial site location, it was much easier to get the utilities to that site location as opposed to the new site location, which still is definitely preferable. Um, don't have to do a lot of moving as, uh, the dirt and things of that that we had to do, but we will have to bring those utilities, many of them across the street, um, which I have come to learn very quickly that that's not cheap. And so in discussions with, there's, I know Commissioner DeWarack, um, has been part of those is that would improve all the lots that honor across the street, um, for, for future use. And I even know that the hospital has some land that's kind of beyond that over there. Um, but that, those costs were not included in the scope of work, um, when we moved from one site to the other. And so that is something that has come up, um, and, uh, wanted to bring that up to the board today and have a discussion about that.
Well, when we move from the, the site spot from the other side, they move a lot of dirt, trees, and everything else. By moving it to over here across the street from the library administration building, we saved nine hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
And so to me, that's utilities that would enhance this complex of serving the community. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm moving to, okay, just me personally, um, the utility work that we get with the need for the job site on, on our dime. So.
So do we have an estimate for what that's going to cost?
Less than two hundred fifty?
Sure.
For the sewer.
Okay. And then what are we talking about for the line extension cost?
The water?
No, the electrical.
We don't know yet.
Okay.
We can't apply for that until we have an address for the property. We won't have an address for the property till the sewer base done.
And the gas line is on the north side of Ravenwood, so it's, it's already, it's already there, so.
Okay. So we, we did have that estimate. Um, we asked Nick to work up what it would take to get sewer and water over there. And, um, he said his department can do that, but obviously the general fund wouldn't pay him for that, you know. But we also have the grant at the state. And, uh, this current status of the grant right now is that we're waiting to hear back how long they will stretch that reimbursement over, since we are not allowed to place a lien on county property, which is what they normally do with this type of grant. They said they would put the funds in an escrow account and pay it back to the county over time. We just don't know how much time.
And what was the amount of the grant, remind me?
A million dollars.
One million, okay.
That was the mental health grant.
So what are we, what are we looking right now? So it says a new contract amount of about five hundred forty thousand dollars. That, that's just for the architecture.
Architecture services, yes.
Okay. And then what are we looking at as far as like the total budget right now for this project?
Six million, not counting the, getting the utilities.
Utilities work.
Okay. And that, I mean, that sounds like that's going to be another half million.
Probably, well, I, you would know better than me how much the electricity will cost, but for the sewer and water, we think no more than two hundred fifty. Yes.
Water is just service connection, so it's our, the facilities are there. That's the difference between, uh, site number one and site number two. Site number one, the sanitary was right there, but we need to extend the water.
Okay.
This new location, the water is just across the street, but the sanitary needs to be extended, so.
Okay.
So even though the county might need to give the money in advance, it will be reimbursed over time?
The one million.
The one.
Correct.
Yeah, not the six million.
Correct. He's already got that.
Yeah.
Six and a half or whatever, million. Okay. Got it.
That's something that we'll have to go out separate for separate bid.
The sewer and water?
Mm-hmm.
Nick was going to be in charge of that for us. That would be done under an MOU with the board. Is that it?
I believe so.
And we've have, have had meetings for seven years over the new youth program house, you know.
I'm sorry?
We've had meetings for over seven years about the new youth home, correct?
It's been, yes, it's been a long time. Yes.
Okay.
What were you talking about spending, uh, seven years ago? You first came up.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Morning.
Morning.
Glenn Verne from Jog County Maintenance Department. Um, this is a service contract that we want to get with Low Lala Masonary Concrete. Uh, this would be for a one-year period. Uh, if we need any concrete or masonry. be for a one-year period if we need any concrete or masonry within county buildings throughout the county that we can get them on site and get a quote and move forward.
So we don't know necessarily where this is going to pop up. We're just kind of, just in case.
Correct.
I'll make.
We have some areas that we have concern, so.
Yeah.
Look at that and.
Okay.
Go from there.
Got it. I'll make a motion to approve number 10.
Second.
Commissioner's office.
Hi.
Commissioner Brereton. Hi.
Yeah, y'all have a good day.
Thanks.
Morning.
Morning.
Nick Gores, Water Resources. Item 11 on the agenda is requesting the board approve and execute a contract maintenance form number one with CUE excavating. It does both revise the address for the contractor and increase our contracts on both water and the wastewater for various locations to utilize CUE for work we can't do, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner's office.
Hi.
Commissioner Moore. Hi.
Yes.
Item 12 on the agenda is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Jameson Weld Drilling for well-maintenance services as needed at various locations within the department. This is just on our water side, and the amount not to exceed $10,000.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner's office.
Hi.
Commissioner Brereton. Hi, Commissioner Moore.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board to schedule a meeting on Thursday, April 24th, 2025, at 9:30 a.m.
All right, I'll make a.
What is this in regards to?
This is in regard to completing the action for the airport.
Does don't we have agenda item number 14 for the airport?
Those are both for the airport. Number 13 is to schedule a meeting to complete everything.
Okay. So I'm just not.
Number 14 is to put the money where it needs to be, so when you complete things on Thursday, we'll be ready to move forward. Do you want to explain it further, Adrian? What number 13 is about?
Right, so in order to, for Debbie to create an encumbrance and expenditure for Thursday, we need to have the cash in the fund. Otherwise, New World won't allow her to complete the process to get that done. So that's what, we were already going to have to do a special financial later this week in order to pay the money out. So there, my understanding was there were going to be some additional discussions and a need to actually schedule a meeting, so it was determined that we could just, in addition to that, do the financial piece on Thursday as well. And it's not something that we could do today? It is possible to authorize the transfer of the $800,000. There might be additional actions that are required for that, and you could make a motion to do the contract or the encumbrance and expenditure as well today, but we're still going to need to do a special financial in order to actually pay that. So we can't, we can't move the cash, create an encumbrance and expenditure, and then actually expend that money all in the same session. We can't do that. Not possible to do that. And that's not something that Linda can approve? Is that on? That was what the original plan was until we were informed of the need to have a meeting, so, of the potential of having a meeting.
Yeah, that's, Thursday meeting is just for the details, but, you know.
We were going to incorporate the financial into that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, I make a motion for 13, so.
Second.
I'm confused because what are we meeting regarding? I understand what you're saying, but I guess, I feel like we're putting the cart ahead of the horse. We have two other, you know, we have, we have, we have another item here on the agenda for number 14, but we're doing a meeting changer or a meeting date. I had nothing to do really with the thought pattern behind setting up the meeting for Thursday. I just said, if you're going to do a meeting on Thursday, we could do the financial at the same time. That's all. Right, so it just needs some clarity what exactly is going on, because I'm totally lost in this. So, so are we, are we, are we looking to move here at number 14? I see that they've got an $800,000 for, to the airport construction fund for a period runs towards the construction, the new tea hanger, but yet we've got a meeting before this that we're rescheduling. I'm just confused what's going on here.
We thought that by now there was going to be an agreement that had been agreed to by the airport authority that you would then affirm today.
Okay.
That did not happen by my understanding, and that instead the airport authority and the commissioners were going to pivot in a different direction, and it's going to take us a day or so to pull the documentation for that together.
Right, because I'm just, I'm, this is news to me, so that's why I'm just trying to put this, the last that I understood was is that, that Jim had stated last week that we were going to have an agreement today, you know, to move forward on. So I.
That didn't work out. It just didn't work out.
I mean, we have a resolution, but the airport is not agreeing to it. That's my understanding.
Right, so they want to pivot and, you know, turn this into a loan process, so if we do item 13 or 14, Thursday's for the details, and then, and that's it, but they.
Is this what you guys are understanding too?
This is all brand new to us. I mean, Chip has some airport sources. I mean, this all was transpired in the last few hours. I guess what, I guess what is happening today and what is planned to happen on Thursday?
Well, 13 is to have a meeting, another meeting.
Right.
And 14 is to put the money into the airport authority construction fund, and Thursday is to work out the details for either the resolution that, you know, might not happen or turn it to a loan. So the details will all be into the loan process, same language, similar language to the loan that the commissioners gave you guys three years ago.
I mean, what Adrian just said, though, is it all can't happen in one meeting? So something has to happen today to allow something to happen on Thursday, is that what?
Correct.
Yeah, they, in order to do the rest of the actions this week, I need to have the money in the fund.
Today.
Correct.
Vote on today.
So yeah, that's why, that's why financials were held up until the end of all this.
All right.
Because the $800,000 transfer is in the financials. If that doesn't pass, then it has to be struck, all right, so, yeah. So let me ask you, don't you think that we should, we should, it would make sense that if it doesn't pass, putting this after this to have a meeting, because if we vote no on this and then we vote for a meeting, then we're, then we're going to need to rescind that meeting? We're going to have to, we'd have to rescind one or the other, I guess, so. I just, I.
So you want to do number 14 first? Is that what you're suggesting?
I mean, this is, this is very, very, very concerning, because why would we have a, why would we be scheduling a meeting for Thursday when we don't even know what, I have no idea what the details are about this for this meeting Thursday? I thought we were discussing the airport and this, this project. My understanding was that we've gone from making this a grant to the airport to being a loan. That's what I have heard. So we did not have the time that this happened. I never just.
Like this morning. That's when I found out.
And the airport authority is willing to have a loan for the second building with the same terms we had for the first building, which was 1.5 and 20 years. That's, that's what came about the last few hours.
I would, I mean, I would note, though, that interest rates, of course, have increased since 2021.
But why would we be charging interest on a building that's ours?
Well, you're already charging interest for the first one. You gave a loan for that, and then, and they are paying one and a half percent interest to pay that back.
And they captured the revenue of the building.
Our understanding was that you were uncomfortable with the terms of the resolution that was created by the prosecutor's office, and did not feel comfortable agreeing to those terms, and so then you did not approve the agreement that was given to you.
Well, there were, there were two resolutions.
Yes.
And one of the resolutions is what we worked with Mr. DeWarack to come up with yesterday, and that was acceptable to the airport authority.
By my understanding, it was not acceptable to the prosecutor, and he would not sign up on it.
And that's out of our control.
It's also.
I get that, so that's what prompted then moving to the loan option, so that we don't, if we don't get this done, as we've told 100 times, we lose FAA $508,500, which is to benefit the Jogga County taxpayer. So that's, that's why this all came about. We're willing, we're willing to work with a loan to be similar to what we did with the first building.
Unfortunately, do you mind if I express an opinion? Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Sure.
I thought the idea of doing the tea hanger was for you guys to have revenue, but if you take this as a loan, you won't have revenue. You'll be paying it all back to pay the loan.
Yeah.
Sure. Go ahead.
What, they state their names.
State your names, please.
We were recording.
We're in Gilster Airport in North. On the purpose of, you know, we realized that we've got lemons, so we're going to make lemonade, and the loan action would allow us to have at 1.5%. We know it's below today's market rates, but we're applying the motion borrowing money from accounting. So the 1.5 would allow us a little bit of room to finance maintenance. In other words, our, our rents would be up here, our costs would be down here, and that margin would allow us additional maintenance and improvement money that would make the airport worth. If the interest rate is too high, then we're just paying off a loan, and we have no cash flow, free cash flow flowing from that transaction.
We already have professional services investments since December 17th, but the commissioners voted to start this process. We did a lot of things in action to get to us, get us to this point. So we've expended, we need $40,000, $50,000 on professional services. If we don't get this done, we lose that, and if we don't get this done this week, we lose the federal money. At the end of the day, it's something we strive for, we'd like to do, and, you know, like Greg just explained, we'll have, we will have much less money for maintenance purposes, but we'll have a building that over 50 years will return to the county concern a lot of money.
So let me ask you, what, what's the interest rate?
I was told this morning 2%, but I guess it's going to be one and a half.
It, I'm comfortable with one and a half percent.
I'm certainly not. I mean, interest rates have increased a lot since 2021, and I mean, if we, if we put this in a bond, we'd get a better interest rate than one and a half to 2%.
So, well, part of what I said in January and February was like, this is Jogga County investing in Jogga County properties and buildings.
So. So if I could just ask you, so I'm just looking at an amortization schedule like for $800,002, your monthly payment is basically $4,047. So what, so what are we looking at as far as collection on a, on the hanger at full on a monthly basis? What are we looking at to be able to collect on a hanger? Like, once the project is complete, what's, what do you?
For the first year, we're going to be slightly in black, but as we raise rates 4%, we would be improving that situation for a year and a second. We do have those numbers here. You've got to find them.
Yeah, I mean, so I've got from this email that was sent after session last week that the first year rent revenue would be $48,787.
Right.
So I don't know what that ends up in a month that we can figure out.
At 20 years at 2%, that equals about $48,564. So in other words, you're, by asking for a higher interest rate, you're effectively killing the deal. I mean, it's an effective way to kill it. So what we're looking for is a little bit ahead of room with a lower interest rate that would allow free cash flow to allow us to do proper maintenance.
Right, because interest alone is over $8,000 a year.
So.
At 2%.
First of all, I'm just saying, right?
Right, right.
So again, 1.5 would allow us a lower monthly nut, if you would, and then you've got the rent on top of that. Again, that would allow us free cash flow. If you want to start this, then you make it 2%, and.
Right, 1.5 will put you a little bit over 60, 6,200 in the interest a year, but your payment is still going to be 3860.
Correct.
Right, you know.
So before session, I asked Adrian if the county was to borrow $800,000 over 20 years, what would our interest rate be? And so he looked it up, and it would be about 5%, just to keep this in mind. So we could not, if the county wanted to borrow this money, we could not do it at one and a half percent or 2%. We would be doing it at 5%.
We're not debating interest rates. We fully are capable of doing those numbers. Again, it's a county function borrowing money from a county to support the county's buildings. So to me, the interest rate discussion is kind of moot. This is not an investment decision. This is, do we support the airport or not?
Right, and that's, I agree with you, and that's, you know, I mean, we just, we just finished up with the jobs and family services for the, for this project, you know, for the, for the youth home, you know, that's still, just the infrastructure alone, you know, that, that money, I understand we're going to have a million-dollar grant coming through from the state, but that's not just for the infrastructure of putting sewer lines and water lines, and that was for the project. But, you know, that, and that's where I'm struggling with this, because we're putting those dollars into a county function there to improve our youth home with no repayment specifically back on that, but yet, what do we, what do we do with the airport? Because, you know, at the end of the day, when we made this decision back in December, and prior to December, you know, the, this, the money is available for this, for us to improve our airport, you know, so that's, that's, that, that was the whole hospice of us helping the airport, helping to improve our fairgrounds, you know, to do things that affect our county and our county value and what we have here. I mean, is that, that's what you guys understood too, correct?
Exactly right.
But I mean, comparing it to the youth center, that's a statutory function of government versus this project is, you know, eight private planes.
Eight private planes that, that, here's, here's the difference, though. The youth center truly is going, I understand the whole statutory side of it, but we, we also are going to have a lot of dollars that go into operating a youth center. In this scenario here, this is pretty much, once this is built, it's a revenue generator for the airport moving down the road. We've got one part-time employee at the airport and, and an entire board of volunteers. So when you look at the cost, you know, cost analysis on what will it cost to run a youth center 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and what it costs us to have a guy park his plane in and get rent money every month, it's kind of a no-brainer. You know, just, I, I just, I struggle with this, because it's, it was, I'm looking at this as, if this was my, if this was my business decision to do this all day long, it's, it's, it makes sense, and it gives us the improvement to our airport. Just I'm struggling to have to, to look at you guys and say, we're giving you another loan. It's, you know, we committed when we knew that our county and Adrian, you're there, we're, we're solid as a county to be able to afford to do this $8,000 transfer to the airport. Yes or no? Yeah, $800,000, yeah, that, I mean, there are sufficient funds that are in place to do this, so. And the thing too. Depending on what you guys decide to do. We had looked at this last year. We would have never taken this project on unless we would have dug deep into this to really, you know, do a projection of, in a, you know, on look forward to say, is this going to affect us? We did it with the airport. We did it with the fairgrounds.
I'd like to call the question regarding number 13. I believe we made a motion in a second.
Motion in a second.
Okay. To schedule a special meeting on Thursday. Yes. Commissioner's office.
I'm going to say no.
Yes. Commissioner's board.
Yes.
Now, number 14.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve an encumbrance and expenditure to the Jogga. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve an encumbrance and expenditure to the Geogga County Airport Authority. In the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars. From the Airport Construction Fund for contributing funds towards the construction of a new T hangar at the Geogga County Airport.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second with the question. So is this that we're just going to make a transfer to the airport fund for eight hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
No.
This is just getting the money into the Airport Construction Fund. So then on Thursday, whatever it is that is gonna be done, we can then. Pay the money to the airport, whether it's a grant, whether it's a loan, whether it's whatever.
Okay, I'll second.
Commissioner Spiller.
Bye.
Commissioner Brady. No.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm Adrian Gordon with the commissioner's office, um, handling number fifteen on the agenda, which is the financials for today. So included in the financials is a cash transfer from the General Fund to Court Technology for a portion of their twenty twenty-five funding. From the General Fund to Community Development, Metz and Baum and Board of Elections. For the first quarter twenty twenty-five interest transfer. From the General Fund to the Board of DD for gas well proceeds from January through March of twenty twenty-five. And from the General Fund to the Airport Construction Fund in preparation for an expenditure for the construction of the new T hangars. Among the encumbrances is the contract P O increase from the commissioner's office to Corsa. For the twenty twenty-five property and liability insurance premium. Which was up sixty-one thousand two hundred and twelve dollars from twenty twenty-four. There are travel requests from the auditor to attend the TechCon three sixty-five, Datacon. And PWR Con conferences. From emergency services to attend the Davis Bessie Nuclear Power Station Drill. And from job and family services to attend the twelfth annual trauma informed care summit. And then and now from emergency services to the Geogga Credit Union for hotel reservations for the Davis Bessie Nuclear Power Plant. Station drill that were not previously encumbered. And among the vouchers is two hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars from the engineer's office. To Valley Ford for two twenty twenty-five Freightliner one oh eight S D plus chassis highway vehicles.
Make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Spiller.
Hi.
No.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yes.
Okay, the, uh, thank you very much. Um, uh, next on the agenda is number sixteen. Which is the commissioner's office is requesting the board approve the twenty twenty-six tax budget hearing schedule. With hearings scheduled on May sixth of twenty twenty-five, May eighth, May thirteenth, and May twentieth.
Is there a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion, but, uh, May thirteen. May thirteen, I am not gonna be available.
That's a Tuesday.
Yeah.
And we're supposed to start, I think, at noon. On.
Twelve.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. So I think Commissioner Brady and Commissioner DeWort, both of you, we're gonna be here on the third.
Yeah, I'll be here for all of these.
Okay.
Who do we have scheduled on the third school?
Board of Elections Prosecutor, Mental Health Public Defender, Veterans Recorder, and Auditor slash student.
You know, unless there's, we, we could reschedule them to another day. I'd like to be there, but, um, I have already have a prior commitment that I'm out of town for.
It's very tight right now. Commissioner DeVorek is, uh, gonna be on vacation for about a week and a half in the middle of all this, so. It was, and I can't wait until the last minute of last month weekend or week of May. I just would not have enough time to get things prepared.
And Adrian, you'll be at all of these, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then which one was Commissioner DeWort unable to attend?
May eighth and May twentieth.
Okay.
So we need two commissioners at each one, and this?
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Well, we should, we should, I don't. It's considered, is it considered a public meeting or just a hearing?
Is it public hearing?
Oh, we, so yeah, we do need to, we do need, should have all these two.
So Commissioner Spatterell, you can go to the other ones except for the thirteenth, just to make sure we have.
Yeah, for both of those, yeah.
Okay.
Hey.
So is it, there was, was there a motion?
Yes. Just now, a second.
All right, I'll second now.
Commissioner Spiller.
Hi.
Commissioner Brady.
Hi.
Yeah.
Number seventeen, Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute. The request for partial payment number nineteen for Infinity Construction Company Incorporated. For the Geogga County Courthouse Expansion, GMP Phase Number One and Phase Two expenses. In the amount of eight hundred ninety thousand, six hundred five dollars and ten cents.
Did NV five review this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm just checking.
Oh, sorry.
Lot of wine, just wanna make sure we got lots of eyes on it. Um, I'll make. Go ahead. Second.
Commissioner Spiller.
Hi.
Commissioner Brady.
Hi.
Commissioner DeWort.
Yes.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the Great Geogga County Fair twenty twenty-five contract. During the period, August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five through September first, twenty twenty-five.
So.
Second, so is this where Destination Geogga sets up?
It has been up until now.
Along with the come.
Okay, and then, so essentially, it seems like they basically give us for free, except we pay the insurance.
It's, it's the Vicentoni.
Oh.
That's what this is for.
Okay.
This is just a, it's a formality type thing. We provide them a certificate of liability insurance. And then there's no cost to us to utilize the Vicentoni building on the fairgrounds.
Okay, but, so we put, are we paying for the, are we giving them their certificate? Because it seems like they're charging us for the insurance here. Okay.
It's on there, but we don't.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. All right, I'll call it back then.
Commissioner Spiller.
Hi.
Commissioner Brady.
Hi.
Yes.
Commissioner Brady, I forgot to bring my phone. Do you mind being the timer to that?
Oh, it'd be my pleasure.
You have a pretty quick voice bank there, there's some money.
Can I just address the board real quick, uh, board discussion before public comment?
Yep.
Um. So this is in regards to the the metal detector and the, uh, the scanner. Um, NV five has, uh, asked me to just, uh, give you all a heads up, um. There is a, uh, a, a body scanner, an X-ray scanner. As well as a metal detector that the sheriff's office. Has selected for the new courthouse.
It's not a body scanner. It's a baggage scanner.
Baggage scanner, sorry, yeah, well, the metal detector, yeah. Sorry.
It's like going to the airport.
Sounds like a good.
Taking your shoes off, yeah.
Um, the, uh. I was, uh, kind of tasked with, uh, trying to get a, a contract together with the two companies. That are providing these, uh, devices. Um, the one for the, uh. Um, metal detector, um, they do not, uh, um, sign, uh, contracts. Um, so that was kind of a bummer, so.
What do you mean they don't think?
It's a service contract, and they don't do that because they don't. Actually come out and service it.
Oh, I see. So they just kind of drop it off or whatever.
No, no, they do do services and and that's the whole reason why both of these companies. Required a county service contract because. They're coming on county property. They could get injured doing what they're doing, and they could damage county property, so. It requires a service contract, so it was kind of a, what are we gonna do now kind of scenario? The, um, the other company that does the baggage scanner, um, included, um. Terms and conditions with their, um. Um, quote or or agreement. That was like three pages, three columns, tiny print, uh, terms and conditions, and I. I felt like that was just a landmine, yeah, like months and months and months of negotiations. My suggestion to NV five and Linda and and, uh, Infinity was that Infinity. Um, take these on. Um. We would be covered through our agreement with the construction, uh, management firm. And, uh, Infinity can negotiate terms with the, uh, with the suppliers of these two devices. Um, there will be a slight increase in cost, um. I left a message for Jared Parker as how much that might be. I haven't heard back prior to this moment. You do, okay?
Because they are not a government, they do not qualify for state bid funding, um, pricing, so it would be eight thousand dollars more for those two devices. Five for the baggage scanner and three for the metal detector. An increase in the cost.
I would, I feel, the total cost right now was like fifty-three thousand dollars. So if you're talking like sixty-one, sixty-two thousand, um, I, I think. Really would be worth it to, in order to keep the project kind of on, on target as far as timing and stuff. And also protect the county from any. Issues that we might have with the other of those two firms, if in fact something were to happen that would normally be covered by our service contract that. They, um, can't participate in or refuse to participate in, so.
And isn't the late time like five or six months to get this?
To get the baggage.
Baggage.
Five months.
So.
So they want to get it ordered.
Okay.
So NV five just wanted me to make you aware of that, that there will be, uh, if you are, uh, amenable to doing that. There will be another change order coming through from Infinity to incorporate those two devices. So, okay. That's it. Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else, Kristen? Uh, item number nineteen, public comment. You get three minutes. This is the first meeting. You give them three minutes. Go ahead. State your name and, or you left.
Yeah, we see legal women voters, Adam and Jordan. Um, I have questions about the, uh, is the Thursday meeting going to be live streamed? Since I have only three minutes, I'll go on to my second question. Can I obtain a schedule of the meetings, the budget meetings that are coming up?
Yes.
Yes. From you, Adrian?
Yeah, I can give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, on both.
Okay. Oh, and are the budget meetings going to be tell up live streamed?
I do not believe so, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's open to the public.
Correct, it is, yes.
Next, uh, comment.
Howard South Russell. Uh. Why do we even talk about things like this? We did away with the dog pound. Uh, they make money for the county every year, the good people. The airport has done a good job over the years and they should continue to do a good job. And and the sheriff can take over the airport maybe like he was gonna do the dog pound. Why are we even talking about this today? No answer. Because you have no answer.
Thank you for your comment.
It's the beginning of the end. Okay, are we gonna have an answer to the airport today?
We. Whatever was on the agenda, we took care of. Come back Thursday.
I will be here Thursday at nine thirty.
I'll open the door for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Time to return. Make the motion to return.
Second.
Fall under favor.
Hi.
Hi.